All right. Well, good evening, everybody. I'll call this work session to order. We have two items in front of us and the first I'll turn to Mr. Reese side. We'll talk about the Lake Shore Seawall. So for those residents in attendance here. At work session, we're just here to discuss the topics that are on the agenda. We normally don't have much public comment, but I'll allow it just so we can hear from our folks that are here. When we get to the second item, I'll make some prefatory remarks, but what Shane, why don't you start with the seawall before we get to the.
Great.
Sewer system evaluation.
Fantastic. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I thought this was an opportunity. Well, we had our engineers from HRC joining us. We have Eddie and Jesse and Jennifer from HRC on the Zoom call. And I think as I reported to city council previously, we did engage HRC to do some work along the seawall in cooperation as an intergovernmental agreement with Wayne County and Gross Point shores to look at the seawall, to look at, we did some soil borings to identify the soil conditions adjacent to the seawall. We did a topographical survey of the area. So we knew the height of the seawall in various locations. And it gave HRC really a sense to assess the overall condition of the seawall, which all of us know is in a state of deterioration. One of the things that we were asked by our congressional representatives in Washington was to really quantify what we need, you know, what, what's the solution? How much is the solution going to cost? And I think we have a better sense of that now. And we do have a meeting next Thursday with congressional staff from Senator Peters, Senator Stabenow and Congresswoman Lawrence's office, where we'll be discussing opportunities for federal funding. But before next means, next week's meeting, I thought it would be helpful for Eddie's image, who's been really the lead person on this to just a real brief summary of what they did, what they found and and just quantify a little bit more of what it's going to take to solve the issue of a deteriorating seawall. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Eddie.
Okay, so Eddie, before you start, brevity is appreciated to the point.
Okay, I will.
We got a lot of ground to cover. People know that the seawall is falling into the lake. So we just kind of like a bullet point about where you guys are headed and what's going on because you know, we, you know, not, I'm not asking you to not tell us anything. I'm just asking you to be brief and to the point. That's all.
Okay. Can I share my screen just for a few slides then?
Sure.
Okay. Thank you, Shane, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. I'm going to share. I'll try to be brief. Shane did. Can everybody see the screen?
Yep.
Yes.
Okay, great. So we're not going to get back into this, but basically we did our proposal in being at 2019, it was for 7,000. We had TEC who did the soil borings for us. They actually did 30 borings to a depth of 30 feet. We did go deeper in a few sections. We went about 35, 36 feet because we did not reach the soil characteristics that we wanted to reach. Basically, we were still a little bit soft. I will try to run through this quicker here. Again, just to recap, we did our survey last winter. TC completed their borings last summer and then they submitted a report of their findings, which is basically the log sheets of all the soil borings in mid-August last year. We also met with Wayne County Gross Point Farms, Gross Point Shores, September 30th last year to kind of go over what we had found, what we had done to date. Gave them recommendations for next steps, came up with an executive summary. Just real brief, then, some of the preliminary findings we did find at 30 feet deep, which we were going to be going for the most part. We did encounter stiff clay for majority of those borings. We did have some plastic properties at some of them, so we went a little bit deeper. Overall, the, basically the depth of clay and the types of clay varied. So basically, we're going to have to take that into account in the design of the embedment depth. As per our meeting, we had September 30th of last year with Wayne County. We did also provide a proposal just before that meeting to both cities to look at, to look at HRC conducting preliminary design engineering for basically taking the soil borings and the soil characteristics that were found in the borings, the topo, taking into account wave action and the winter ice flows to come up with some various seawall design sections, because as I said earlier, we cannot just put the same type of wall with the same depth of embedment throughout the entire three mile stretch. It's going to vary by the soil conditions, soil characteristics. So in this proposal, and again, just real quick, it was the proposal was for $68,820. Again, this is for preliminary engineering that is the next step that's required to come up with some cross-sections. The soil boring report is not enough to go by. If to fully design the project, you need to look deeper into the boring and the soil characteristics, discuss further with the geotech consultant and come up with some new, and come up with some detailed cross-sections. And that, of course, will also entail working with permit agencies, Army Corps, Eagle, Coast Guard to talk about their specific requirements they may have for seawalls. Overall, what we came up with thus far, which will be part of this $60,000 proposal, will be to come up with approximately 25 different seawall design sections. And again, some of those are because of the embedment depth is going to vary. And as well as looking at other special site features, wall features such as areas where there's an outfall, you have to build the wall around. There's different types of outfalls, as you know, so taking that into account, we are approximating about 25 different seawall design sections we would need to come up with. Overall, the average steel sheet length would be about 28 feet with about 20 feet on average being embedded below the lake. Conceptually, we came up with an estimate of cost to install the permanent steel sheet piling through the approximate three mile stretch, and we're looking at approximately $24 million with engineering contingencies. Now, there's, again, this is a preliminary number until we really have these detailed design sections down and understand more about the soil underneath. This number could change, could go down. It's possible it could go up as well, but this was a pretty good estimate based on what we have found thus far out there. We also came up with some temporary interim measures that could be taken to prohibit the erosion from becoming more severe. And we have them listed here. Won't go over these in detail. However, there are some pretty good cost-effective ways to temporarily, I must emphasize that temporarily, help with the problem. But again, in the long run, as we all know, what you need out there is a new steel sheet piling wall and not even a concrete wall, which is there now. The cost to build a new concrete wall would be much more, would take a lot longer. You have to build cofferdams. It's just not feasible and basically steel sheet piling is the way to go. As Shane said, we do have a meeting, which we're looking forward to next week. I will basically giving this presentation, but I also will elaborate more for them, especially the congressional leaders who have not seen basically the pictures, what it looks like and haven't maybe been privy to how dire, you know, looking at replacing this wall is. I will, I'll just look at these real, we'll look at these real quick, but I'm sure everyone has seen these. These were taken. I took these about 10 days ago. You're getting near the road here. Maras near Pier Park. North of Moran, again, you get near the road. Newberry. And again, these are just some of the sections I saw. There's obviously dozens of sections similar to this that have major issues, and I'm not even looking at the seawall over here as far as all the breaching. I'm was really trying to take some of the worst eroded bank areas that we've seen. Here is a good situation where you got your structure basically being exposed by the erosion. Just so you know, just looking at a couple in the shores north view, this is one of their areas at Stratton, which is one of their worst ones, and this is probably the worst one right now at Clairview. They do have a wider greenbelt, as you know, but basically they've already lost some bushes and just like the farms isn't probably going to lose some trees near Newberry, which I showed you a picture earlier. So there's definitely a progression in deterioration in the seawall over even just the last six months, but in particular, the last two years for sure. So with that, I was as brief as I could here, and I will stop sharing the screen. If you do have any questions, please let me know. Again, we are meeting next week. Finally having everybody in the same room at one time, so we're looking forward to that and hopefully we can get something going.
So Shane, before I open it to council, can you go through at least what Tim Colleen had raised in terms of timing? Where, how long he thought it would take to get this through the county and at the federal level? I think he sent us something a couple, about a month or so ago when he got this initial report.
Right. Yeah, it is a long process. I'm mad. I don't, you know, pretend otherwise. It really is, you know, to, to, to secure federal funding. You know, there's, there are going to be a lot of requirements. You know, I anticipate that we're, you know, in our discussions, it's a, it's not a weeks or month project. It's a, you know, year, two-year process to be able to secure federal funding. You know, so that's, that's, that's out there. I think on a positive note, I guess there's a couple of other things I want to add. We've had a conversation with Wayne County about doing some of the remedial, the temporary type of restoration remedies that we can do to help fortify that wall in the meantime. And we've gotten county has approved, and we've been told that they were going to start filling some of those open voids and using more of a bedrock, a more substantial stone in those areas. What they had been doing prior to that had been filling it with just a crushed aggregate. A very, you know, small pieces of stone that frankly just would wash away after a major storm event. And so we're hoping by doing that, maybe some, using some deviants to secure that stone, it will, it will last longer. The other thing we have going for us right now is we're seeing lake levels drop. If you, if you look at this, the wall around the Pier Park, you can see where a lot of the beach here that previously was underwater, the, the seawall that goes out perpendicular to the beach at the park is now exposed about a foot and a half to two feet. So, you know, again, depending on conditions, lake levels may drop significantly over, you know, they have dropped significantly and made a further drop over the summer. And the benefit, obviously, of that is you don't, we won't have the same amount of degradation deterioration due to the wave action. So short term, I think there are things that we're going to be able to do to get a little more life out of this seawall. But it's got to be addressed and we'll have hopefully more answers after our meeting next Tuesday, next Thursday.
Okay, great. Who has any questions? Love?
Couple of questions, Louis, if I could, one for Shane. Generally speaking, Shane, for projects like this where there's federal and county involvement with the fees, with the, with the cost, would we have to pay anything ourselves? Or is this likely going to be something that we wouldn't have to pay into the project costs, you know?
Well, I think it's been the city's position and we haven't, we haven't hit our position at all with the county is that the seawall along Lake Shore Road is county infrastructure. It's part of protection of Lake Shore Road, which is a county road that has historically been maintained by Wayne County. And we feel it's a responsibility. With that said, we, we realize Wayne County, you know, doesn't have $23, $24 million, you know, sitting around that they can invest on the seawall at this point. And so we're really have taken a kind of a proactive cooperative approach by, by agreeing to move forward with engineering and intergovernmental agreement to, you know, ascertain what needs to be done and what it's going to cost and how it can be done. So we can then lobby for federal funds. And frankly, you know, that's, that's an unknown. We don't know whether, you know, depending on what kind of funding we get, I assume there'll be a local portion and how that gets divided, whether that's responsibility to the county or there's some negotiations amongst the communities. That's, I think, a subject for further discussion.
Okay. All right. Very good. And Louis, if I could ask Eddie a question, please. Eddie, the $23 million cost. Could you, could you tell me what's going to, what, what is that design that you have there do with the revetment or the, the banked, the concrete banking? Does it, does it, does that include just breaking it up and taking away to a landfill?
So, so basically in that 24 million roughly cost about, we put about a million or so into it to basically just to break up the revetment that's not already broken up basically. So it does not include any additional cost if you're going to pour newer vetment or come up with some sort of, I've heard ideas of boardwalks, I've heard lots of ideas. It does not include anything else other than basically breaking the remaining revetment that's there and leaving it in place.
Do you think in your view that with your experience with DEQ and now Eagle, they would allow the, the concrete to be put in, in front of the new seawall to accomplish a number of things. First, we wouldn't have to send it off to a landfill, so it saves a lot of costs. Number two, break up wave action. Number three, I think it would be, it would be good for fish and also aquatic insect habitat so that you'd get a lot of benefits if you were able to just, as I've seen on a number of parks where you got a lot of concrete, you know, supporting the walls or the shoreline, would that, do you think that would be something that we could argue for in terms of the design of this thing?
Well, that would definitely have to be something that we would have to discuss with Eagle prior. I, truthfully, I don't see them allowing anything in the revetment area to be broken up and put on the other side of the wall into the water itself. I guess, again, we could discuss this with them to see what, what they would allow or would not allow. I, I think what's probably going to have to happen is the new sheet pile wall would basically be dug. I'm sorry, driven right in front of the existing concrete wall that's there now and then rubbleize everything behind it towards the curb and leave it in place. That's, that's what I believe Eagle will probably only allow. Again, we would definitely look into that as, you know, as a project would come closer to discuss that with them and see if that's a possibility.
Okay, thanks.
All right. I think John Galouli had his hand up.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, very briefly, and thank you for calling this planning meeting and including this very important topic on the agenda. As we've seen, I don't think this is an important topic only for protection of the roadway. But as we've seen in these photographs, now the infrastructure is definitely being affected. And the infrastructure informs of water lines and sewer lines running parallel to that roadway. If anything happens to those, we're looking at a price tag far north than what we're even talking about here today. This is a very important issue. And for the safety of the public as well, that area, for some reason, I'm a lifer here, as you know, is being used more and more these days with temporary hammocks, people jogging, walking dogs. And to the extent possible, we continue to encourage people to lay off, so to speak, to stay off of the area between the roadway and the lake for the time being, and we're working on it. Thank you again for the update. Hubble, Roth and Clark, as always, in our own administration have done a great job. Thank you.
Thanks, John. Beth? You're on mute there.
Sorry about that. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and everyone else that has given this presentation has done all this work and Shane, kudos to you on being so persistent with this. We all appreciate it. I echo what the previous council person has outlined. I think we've got some environmental issues as well, but my question is this. Val's pictures are so graphic, and if you've even just walked down there and take a look at it, or if you're on a boat and you see it when you have, you know, clement weather. Is there any way that we qualify or could this be a question to be asked to our federal congressional delegation? Would we qualify for any federal disaster funds?
That's something we will explore, and I do know that the state is, as, and Senator Peters' office particularly, has been lobbying for federal fundings statewide because of obviously the, the higher water levels in the Great Lakes. I believe we're not alone. It's impacting communities on the, along the east side of the state, on the west side of the state, northern part of the state. And there are dollars available. They're, they're somewhat restrictive currently, and whether they could be applied for this situation, I think is, is, will be the challenge. But it's something that we'll be discussing seriously on next Thursday.
Thank you.
All right, Neil?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I had some questions for Eddie, if that's all right. Just, just some practical questions. What, what is the like perceived lifespan of the seawall that we're talking about? And, you know, as someone kind of very looking, looking at that distant horizon. Are, I assume that we're kind of thinking about how climate change impacts the lakes. We're talking about the, the rising levels of the previous years and the lower levels today. What kind of variation are we, are we imagining that these seawalls will be able to hold the lake at significantly higher levels than we've seen thus far and how much?
I, I think some of that goes into design later. I, I know we have internally discussed the, the idea of probably wanting the wall at least one foot higher than it, what it is now. And again, that could be during design, we could look at maybe going even another foot higher. You've got some room there to go vertically and still not impact what people see from their homes across the street or, you know, the road. So, but it does come down to safety, obviously, and you, if we need to go higher, I mean, everything seems to be cyclical, obviously. We've been very high these last couple of years. We were low 10 years ago, another 10 years, we may be a few feet lower again, hard to say, but during design, we definitely would look at the option of potentially, you know, building up the wall higher than what it, what it is now to try to help that situation with rising waters, because I'm sure over time, obviously, we're going to, we're going to be experiencing this again, I'm sure. Maybe this year again, I'm hard to say, but over time, of course, we will. As far as the lifespan, again, we would be looking at using galvanized material. So basically zinc coated, so that's going to improve the, the lifespan of this wall. I guess as far as putting a number of years on that, I mean, I mean, it could be a 70, 75 year wall. Yeah, it's, I'd have to, you know, really have structural. Give me, that's more of a structural question as far as what they feel, but obviously putting this in place is going to be something that's going to be here for a very long time.
Yeah. And does the galvanized steel construction mean that it'll be easier if, if some part of the wall failed at some point, it would be easier to fix that segment of it, or is it about the same to?
No, it's about the same. It just basically is more protection when it's galvanized. Last line.
I mean, at the end of the day, it's, this is going to be a difference between being investing pennies now versus dollars later. And so here's hoping that with the help of the federal government, we can actually get something that doesn't destroy our infrastructure.
All right.
All right. Thanks, Neil. Joe, have any questions? Nope. Okay. Jimmy, any questions?
No, it's been a long time coming, Louis. We worked on this a long time ago. And I mean, a long time ago, probably was first mayor. And it's nice to see it come to fruition, but we got to work hard to do it and you know, it's, we got to keep pushing forward. So no questions. Sorry I was late.
No problem. And Neil asked my question. So at this point, anybody in the public have any questions? Steve raises his hand, but Derek, why don't you explain how to do this and then we'll get to Mr. Cruz.
Yes, in part, the participants section, you can raise your hand and we'll just call on everyone in the order that the hands are raised. And we have our first hand, which is Steve Cruz. I'm going to go ahead and unmute him now.
And remind everybody, we need name and address to when you begin speaking. Thank you.
Thanks, Steve Cruz, 271 Melbourne. I just had a question. It sounds like you guys are being proactive, which, which is good. I joined this meeting because I wasn't sure what was happening. Is there an expectation that the taxpayers will, may end up putting the bill for this if we can't get some or all the funding from the federal or state governments?
My answer would be no. Because the Wayne, Wayne County has said in writing that it is their wall and their problem and between the shores and we to front the $23 million while we sue them potentially, which I never want to say because we work cooperatively with them. But Steve, that would be a course of last resort. They, the, we have, that's why we've engaged Congresswoman Lawrence, Senators Stabenow and Peters. And all three of our federal representatives have actually been tremendously supportive and are looking for a solution here because they know it's an issue. And particularly with Gross Point Shores already experiencing a breach of their sewer system, which had to be fixed down by the Gross Point Club where lake water was going into their sewer system. Everybody knows this is a critical fix, and I think we finally got the county's attention by getting the federal officials involved.
Okay, Bill Vogel, I'm going to unmute you. Okay, Bill, you're, you're unmuted. Go ahead and state your address.
Mr. Vogel, you're up. You're unmuted. We just can't hear you though. Oh, now you're muted again.
I want to ask him to turn up his volume on his computer.
Bill, you there? I don't know if your volume's up or your mic might be disconnected by mistake. It's happened before on folks' computers. Bill, while you're checking that, let's go to the other hand raised for a moment. Derek, who was it?
I'm not seeing a hand right now. But we, we could address Bill Vogel's question later if he's able to get his mic working on his end.
All right, let's do that. All right, without.
Or you can type his question.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, email the question to Derek if you want or type it. All right. So with no more questions then from the public and the council, thanks guys for that presentation. It was helpful. We'll report back after we have the meeting in early February before, at the council meeting. So we have an idea. We'll get some good, better idea of what's going on. Know that at least at some point, as we said at prior council meetings, Know that at least at some point, as we said at prior council meetings, the Army Corps of Engineers thought they wanted to put giant riprap all the way down, and that just won't work with this, with this lake at all, so we'll hopefully get the Army Corps engaged in a real seawall here, so we can move ahead with this project, because like I said, it'll take a couple of years of engineering, financing, et cetera, to get done. All right, the second item is a presentation of sewer system evaluation study by HRC. Before I turn it over to Mr. Reese, I just, you know, as everybody knows, we've been looking at this. We've had HRC present a few other times about this project, about metering areas of the farms, which I believe Jesse will be going over quickly when we go through this. Also, as a reminder, a second thing is that our consent decree order judgment regarding our settlement of the basement flooding cases has a provision in there that we are to do some sewer fixes, so this is as much of a need to do as we have to do to comply with that order. So as we go through this, look through the options, you know, remember that, that occurred a couple of years ago. And third, I think it's important to note that whatever each of these scenarios that we are examining helps the entire inland district. So even though someone's particular street doesn't look like it's got any action on it, know that the fix is to help the entire inland district, not just the streets that are being dug up and having sewer work. So if one side of town has the majority of work, the other side of town still benefits from that water coming out of the system, because that means any water on that side of the district can be handled much easier as it comes into our pumping station. So Shane, again, Jesse, I will, I know you're presenting, so we obviously know, Jesse, that the $100 million option is on the table. So you can briefly go over those that are out of our price range. We know there are some Bentley's that you threw in there. And there's a Ugo tossed in there, I think, as well, so I don't think we need the Ugo or the Bentley, which we, you know, can't afford the Bentley, so we can, you know, I know you're gonna go through those briefly, but if we can focus on the couple that you think are the ones that we really need to focus on, that's helpful. So with that, Shane, I'll let you kick it off.
Yeah, I think you, you did a good introduction, Mayor, and that was, you know, one of the things we, we did just two years ago now, is we actually had Hubble, Roth and Clark do an evaluation of the system starter process, where they put meters in our sewer system throughout the city, not only in the inland district, but the lakeside district as well. And so we could get a better sense of, you know, where those flows of stormwater are entering the system, and then identify, you know, the most beneficial way of getting stormwater out of the combined system in terms of volume and, and being cost effective. And so with that, I know Jesse may have an additional lead on, lead in. Jennifer's with us from HRC, who's really been the lead person, and she'll kind of go over briefly alternatives that were looked at and the ultimate recommendation.
Thanks. Thank you, Shane, and thank you, Mayor and Council, for giving us this opportunity to present what everybody understands is a very significant project and impact to alleviate the potential for further basement flooding in the inland district. For those new council members that haven't been privy to the interim presentations that we have given with regard to the flow metering that was discussed, Jennifer is going to give a brief history on that to bring everybody up to speed. And then she's gonna coast through some of the, we're gonna call them Bentley and Ugo options, to quote the mayor. And we'll dive into what we believe is the most cost effective and prudent option to proceed with, again, minimizing the potential for basement flooding in the inland district. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Jennifer. Derek, if you can allow her to share her screen, she's prepared a presentation that will walk us through the history, what got us to where we are today, and then summarize the recommendation that's in front of you now. Thank you.
All right, can everyone see my screen? Okay. All right, so we're gonna go through the sewer system evaluation report, and then we're gonna talk a little more about alternative six and what the next steps are. General meeting outcome would be to approve the concepts of alternative six and, and then start project bond discussions down the line. So before we dig into these different alternatives, I thought it would be good that we review combined sewer systems. So with a combined system, your stormwater and your sanitary, they're collected in the same pipe. So during dry weather flow, there's no problem, and maybe even during a smaller rain event that might not be too big of a problem. But then you get into these bigger storms, and then you finally get the really big storm that leads to some basement flooding. So I think a lot of you guys are aware of this scenario. So when you go through and separate your system, the, the first thing you do is you, you construct new storm sewer along the road, and it's basically picking up your road catch basins. But this old combined sewer, it gets converted to your sanitary system. It becomes the quote unquote separated sanitary system. So in the case of Gross Pointe Farms, you know, you, you guys, your sewer system is, was built in the 1920s. So you're looking at a system that's over 100 years old. And so there's certain construction techniques from that time. A lot of the, when it was a combined sewer, it was purposely meant to drain the system, so you have short pipe segments that are not sealed with sealing joints and acts like a French drain to keep your system dry. The next step, when you do a combined separation program typically is you'll go through and do a downspout disconnection program, because this is a tremendous amount of water that if it's coming off the roofs and going right in and left in your system, that's a lot. And then under real extreme cases, there may be a footing drain disconnection program. Most, most communities don't go this route because it's very invasive. So it's only if there's persistent issues. So typically, this part is not done. So if we take a look at the city system, the lakeside district was separated in the early 2000s. So this area here was combined and it was separated. And your inland district remains combined today. So this, this dividing line along here is the reason why it was like this is because this is a high point in the system, and it's, it's aptly named Ridge Road. So this is a high point where the, the land here is sloped towards Lake St. Clair, and it was very easy, easier to install storm sewers and discharge it out to the lake. Whereas here, you guys, on the inland side, it's, it's difficult. I have a graphic later to show you on that. So if we look at some historical flooding, in 2011, there were a couple significant events. The May 2050 event was 130 year event, and so that alone is, it's a, that's a pretty significant event when you talk about a level of service that a community can provide. Systems have finite capacity. They can't just take on, you keep, you don't design it for 100 year events. So this was a pretty significant event. But an issue that affected it was intermittent power failure from DTE to the Kirby Road Pump Station. So that really affected what happened during that event. Then in September, you had approximately a 14 year event, and but you had extended power failure from DTE at the Kirby Road Pump Station where the pump station was off for several hours. So, so that everyone understands, you know, all your separated sewage from lakeside and all your stormwater and sewage on the inland district, it all gets to the Kirby Road Pump Station. And then that pump station pumps it into the Fox Creek enclosure, and then it's taken to Great Lakes Water Authority. So everything is dependent on, you know, that the pump station is working and that it has power. So if, if you don't have power here, then you will have issues. So between 2011 and 2013, the city proactively created a hydraulic model of the inland district, upgraded the Kirby Road Pump Station, and then built the standby generator for Kirby Road Pump Station. So that was a huge investment into the system, and it seems with, with that standby generator, you, you should not have this type of issue again. And also restricted catch basins were installed in the inland district. So just so to show people, here's an example of like a regular stormwater catch basin, and then what an example of a restricted catch basin inland might look like. And so the idea here is that you're, you're just slowing down that peak flow, and you're essentially using the street as, as a little bit of storage. And, and you're just attenuating that peak flow so that Kirby has a chance to pump out to the Fox Creek enclosure. Between 2015 and 17, there were some other events. There was various events. And the majority of the flooding was due to localized issues. I'll talk a little more about localized issues in a second. So, um, a lot of this all culminated into our sewer system evaluation that we're talking about, and a big component of that evaluation was to look at sewer separation in the inland district. What, what is the most impactful solution or combination of separation can the city do to help eliminate or reduce a lot of these flooding events? So the other, so these purposes of, of looking at separation is to, one, increase the level of service for the inland district. So your level of service is roughly a five year event for the inland side, inland district, and this is pretty typical for a combined system. So you, by doing this, by doing a separation project, you will increase your level of service, will reduce the likelihood of flooding. You will reduce the extent and duration of street flooding with the removal of restricted catch basins in the areas where you can actually do the separation. And you will reduce annual Great Lakes Water Authority sewage fees. We've been meeting with GLWA. They did revise the sewage methodology recently, so we've been meeting with them, and we have talked to, with them about this potential project, and that there would be a realized reduction in fees, and just like when you guys separated on the lakeside district, at the time would have been DWSD, they, you know, was approached, and there was a reduction at that time, so the same thing would occur when, for whatever separation project that you guys choose. So the sewer system evaluation had two main components, and the first component was the meter study. So we put in 14 meters and monitored for nine months, and the meters were put throughout the lakeside district and the inland district. And so the, there was two purposes for it. Number one, we wanted to know what is going on in your lakeside district. This is a separated area, so, you know, how's it functioning? Again, it's a 100 year old separated area, like the, the pipes are 100 years old that are your separated sanitary. We wanted to see how that was functioning, and then we collected data within the, the inland district in order to calibrate the model. So on the lakeside district, when we're doing a separated sanitary sewer study, a typical thing to do in order to compare between these different meter districts is we'll collect data, we have a whole bunch of rain events, and then we'll project out to the design event, in this case, is a 10 year, one hour projected peak flow, and then we'll divide it by tributary population. And the reason we do that is we compare it to an acceptable rate. So the Environmental Protection Agency, the EPA, has indicated that your wet weather flows are considered to be excessive if your flow rates are greater than 275 gallons per capita per day. So that's what this unit is. So you can see in this column here, these are your, your, this is your 10 year, one hour projected peak wet weather flow in gallons per capita per day. So you can see that these numbers are off the chart, more than 10 times, 20 times this allowable rate. So there's many different sources of this excess flow. So a big source is the footing drain flow that we talked about. Let's just go through these real quick. So you have on the infiltration side, a broken lateral root intrusion into the main or lateral, a faulty lateral connection, a cracked or broken pipe, a deteriorated manhole. On the inflow side, you have your downspout connection like we talked about. You have your footing drain like we talked about. You have an uncapped cleanout, an inadvertent or advertent storm cross connection, and faulty manhole cover frame. So, uh, you're, the inflow sources like cleanout cap and you're like a deteriorated cover frame, these, these are exacerbated if they're in a low lying area where water could pond over top. And your infiltration sources are exacerbated if the groundwater table is high. So if their lake levels are high, your groundwater table's high. Another interesting thing to note, which will come into discussion when we talk about local sources, local issues, you can see that many of these issues are on the homeowner's side of things. So if their lead is broken or has root intrusion, it's something that the homeowners need to be made aware that this is their responsibility. And these type of things will affect, can cause basement flooding for them during rain events, because that you're, they have a reduced capacity. So, okay, so coming back to this, these flow, these numbers are off the chart. There is quite a few numbers. It is, there's, sorry. There's the footing drain like we talked about and all those other sources like we talked about. But we look, a couple are really, really high. So if we take a look, one here is the Hunt Club, which is this little area here. So it makes sense, actually, that this number is so high, because this area is actually combined. So your, the stormwater and sanitary is connected to the sewer on Provence. So the city has been talking with the Hunt Club on this issue, and it's part of our recommendations in the next slide. The next high number here is the, this meter three Provence East, so it is isolating this district C. So one of our suppositions is that it may be possible that the Country Club of Detroit Golf Course could have underdrains maybe still connected somehow to the sanitary system. It, because this number is so high. So the general recommendations that we had for the lakeside district was to proceed with field investigations. One of the things we recommended was smoke testing throughout the whole lakeside district. But we understand that that's a pretty expensive endeavor. At the same time, the sewers are old, and that it would be wise to perhaps investigate them, but perhaps a option is to start with a pilot study in the CCD area, where we can find out if there's any connections from the golf course. The other recommendation was to encourage Hunt Club to separate their combined sewer, or perhaps pay a fee similar to, you know, just like what you pay a Great Lakes Water Authority. You pay, they would pay the same type of rate to you guys, since you're paying for their flow. So that was part one, was the meter study, and then part two is our model update. So we did use the meters in the inland district to help calibrate the model, and this is just a schematic to show you our model. All these little, little catchments, these little polygons, those are the, how the system is broken up into these 527 catchments. Well, once we had the, the model updated. Well, once we had the, the model updated, we looked at these 13 different alternatives. And just for everyone who understands the nomenclature, when we talk about the quads, the inland quads where it, it's in reference to a relation to the Maras and Shellfont intersection. So anything north of Maras, west of Shellfont, that's like our northwest quad. Northeast it is, northern Maras, east of Shellfont. And then the southwest, southeast are south of Maras and then west of Nisa Shellfont, just so you understand. So the first alternative, which I know we, well, I'll go, this will be really quick. So the first alternative was looking at improvements, INI removal, infiltration, info removal in your lakeside district. And, um, and so with that, just I'll also explain this table, even though I'm not going to go through, for each alternative, I'm not going to dwell on these tables, but just to explain what's going on with these tables. So, um, assuming we could remove a certain amount of flow from your lakeside district, that would work out to a total of three, a peak shaving of peak, sorry, removal of three CFS of peak flow cubic feet per second at the Kirby Road pump station. And that would result in a total volume of 0.13 million gallons. So what we're, and this is for the design event, a 10-year, one-hour. So what we're looking at on this side is, based on what, everything that's coming to this, to the Kirby Road. So again, the whole city goes to Kirby Road pump station. That translates to a 1% peak flow reduction and a 4% volume reduction. And then this eliminated reduction in surcharging and potential for basement flooding. What that has to do with is that we looked at areas throughout the city that have some historical issues. And every scenario that we looked at, we looked at what was the result for those, it's for those historical issues. So I'm not going to show this for every alternative until we get down to alternative six. But this is appendix F of the, the main report. So we did provide all this. Okay, so the next two alternatives, two A and two B, two B, they're related to, so two A is separation of the northeast quadrant or here. And the difference between two A and two B is we're doing separation, plus we're doing the INI removal in the lakeshore. So the next, the next two alternatives are similar. It's, it's the separation only and then the separation plus INI removal. So the separation here, this separation project is very similar to what you need, what you guys did in the lakeside district. You need to construct a stormwater sewer. And the big difference here is that you need to have a pump station and a way to get it out to the lake. So I just threw this in to exaggerate what's going on. So on the lakeside district, when you did the separation, by, you could put your storm sewer in and by gravity, it could get out to the lake. What the issue you're facing on, on the inland district is that, you know, everything is flowing, you know, the ground is sloped towards, say, Kirby in a sense. And so what you have to do is you first construct your storm interceptor and then you have to bring that storm interceptor to a pump station. And then it's going to pump it out until you can flow by gravity to the lake. So that's just a little graphic to explain. So you'll see this little, for the separation alternatives, you'll see the, this little square represents the pump station. And then the force main is, you know, represented by this purple line. And the force main right now, like these are high-level, like, you know, planning level alternatives. So there, there can be other ways you could slice and dice this. Okay, so I'm not going to step through all these tables. You have it in to look at on your own time. I'll just quick kind of show the different alternatives that we investigated. So alternative two C is putting the storms or a collector, storm interceptor down shelf on and separation of the, the, the north quads, if you will. And you would, you would have storms who are down these streets as well, bringing it to the storm collector. Again, it gets to a pump station and then we bring it out to the lake. Um, two D is the same thing except we're including I and I removal in the lakeside district. So then, two E, we just looked at the, the northwest quad separation. Two F is the southwest quad separation. And two G is your, the southeast quad separation. And you can see that the price tag keeps going up and up. Then, alternative three, which is really the ninth one that we looked at, is the entire inland district separation. So you can see like you'd have to, again, you, the main thing is you need the infrastructure. So I'll come back to meeting the infrastructure, but this was a pretty big alternative. This must be, this one's of the Bentley. So, um, number four was looking at a stormwater retention basin. So can we say construct us a stormwater collector and then bring it to a basin? And then with slowly de-water to Kirby? So that's what the next couple of alternatives kind of looked at. And the idea of this graphic is just to give you an idea of footprint size you would need for these different types of alternatives. Instead of having to build a pumps, stormwater pump station and a force main and bring it out to the lake, we were, we thought, well, can you, can we make a basin and you store it? And then you gradually will de-water to Kirby when there's capacity. So this assumes there's an 18 foot, the, the depth is 18 feet. And then these are different events like separation of northwest quad. This is the approximate size you would need. So essentially, storage is, is not realistic. The, the big thing is all that stormwater is still in the system and you're still sending it to GLWA and you're, so you're still paying for it that way. So five A and five B are very similar. Five B was just, you know, we put in a basin and you do partial separation. Again, there, we, we didn't like these ones. So now we finally at the, the recommended alternative. So it includes alternative two C, so that complete separation in the north quads. Um, again, your stormwater collector and then you'll have storms who are in the, in the local streets here, a pump station and then a force main to get it out to the lake. And then you would have partial separation in the southeast, the southeast quad. Your, your handout says southwest, I made a little typo, so it should be the southeast quad. So one of the findings of our study was that there, there were people who had local issues. So that again comes back to people having roots or grease or like a pipe issue on their sewer lead. And that causes them to have basement flooding. And however, there's a localized issue along the street. And that was one of the things we found in this particular graphic, I hope illustrates that for you. So this is showing Mount Vernon profile between Charlevoy and Bopray. So this sewer here, it's kind of hard to see, but this is a manhole for a sewer going in and out of the screen. So that is actually the Bopray sewer, which is tributary to your Shellfont sewer. So this line right there, that's the maximum hydraulic grade or the maximum the water went in for this event that we looked at. And we can see though, that this particular sewer along Mount Vernon, that the, this hydraulic grade, the pressure, the sewer became pressurized and is likely the result that, of why the people here experienced basement flooding. And that is that this sewer itself is undersized. And so by constructing localized separation, partial separation along these streets with discharging back to Bopray or the Shellfont sewer, which has capacity, then you are separating so that the, the only flow that they will get during a rain event in, in, in terms of like in this, this profile would be just sanitary sewage. So that is the idea behind these three partial, these areas for partial separation. And those are Mount Vernon, McMillan and McKinley, those are those three streets. So again, the route of storm flow for this force main or exactly where we've, I've had some discussions with Shane on some different ideas of, of where we could do with this. That will, that will be determined under basis of design. The one thing that we do talk about in the report is to consider if possible, for whatever you do construct, can you try to make it to be expandable for future flows, future separation? So when it comes to like separating other areas in the city, once you have this infrastructure in place, if it can be expandable, then you, you have that storm outlet now. So then you can consider additional separation down the road. So if we take a look at our table results then for this, this alternative, it's reducing the peak flow by 112 CFS cubic feet per second. It's reducing the volume at Kirby by 0.52 million gallons, which translates to a 32% reduction in peak flow and a 17% reduction in volume. It also reduces the, the surcharging and potential for basement flooding by 58%. So coming back to this graphic I showed you earlier, this was our existing condition. And we can see that this particular alternative will result in green areas in many, many areas of the city. And then not to be concerned that these red lines, they just indicate that the pipe is surcharged. That doesn't necessarily mean that there's basement flooding. So if the pipe fills up, but you are still below basement elevations, then you're fine. So this was the most impactful solution to the issue that, that the city was investigating. As a, from a planning level, preliminary estimate, we have this alternative at 21 to 27 million dollars, which is subject to change once we get into the basis of design and start nailing down final routes and pump station sizing and that sort of thing. So that, that's, that's what I have. I tried to be brief, 27 minutes. So hopefully we can just talk about, if you have questions and whatnot on, on the alternative six or other.
Questions, Jennifer and Jesse, what's included in the 21 to 26? You've got that pumping station at the corner of, or something, at the corner of Maras and Shellfont, indicated by the sort of yellow square there. So does that include, what, what are we all inclusive in this 21 to 26 million or 27 million?
Um, it includes the, the storm sewers you would need down these roads in the northwest quad, the storm interceptor. A first cut on the pump station. So that's where the cost, once you start drilling down into a few, in order to make it, how do you say, designed for future expansion, that could cause an, an increase in cost at the pump station. And then we just assumed so much per linear foot of forced main down Maras. Like didn't, we didn't do anything detailed to know, like, are you going to, how we fit this in with the existing utilities? We just drew a line just exactly like this and then determine the linear footage. And then also stormwater, storm sewer down these streets. And I should say, just to be clear, the, the storm sewer would be down these streets, but then it would discharge back into Shellfont, the combined sewer.
So that would include road repair, you know, demolition, reconstruction of roads, anything that's torn up. So return it to its present condition or better.
Yeah, yes.
And, and engineering and, and contingency.
And then, then I'll turn, before I turn over the questions, you've got it going on Maras. And I know we had talked about trying to cut across the golf course. Can you talk about that, Jennifer, for a moment? Are there any cost savings there, harder, easier?
Um, I, I'm going to jump in here to try to help answer that question. As Jennifer stated, the study is basically 2D. So this information and the cost estimates that were generated are based on what we know at the surface. Quite frankly, the next step is to enter into the basis of design report. And in the basis of design, physical assets would be surveyed as far as all of the existing utilities and obstructions between point A and point B. Uh, and various alternative routes would have to be evaluated, mayor, to identify what the, not only what's the most ideal, less disruptive, most economically beneficial to facilitate conveying the stormwater over Ridge Road eventually to where we could potentially even turn back into a gravity sewer for the remainder of the discharge. I would anticipate that during the basis of design study, we're going to have likely at least three different route alternatives that we'll, we would engage in the form of a workshop with council to understand what the advantages and disadvantages of each alignment are. As you are well aware, if we get out of Maras, then obviously easements are necessary to be procured from private property owners. Those are things that need to be considered. Even the configuration here, what you're looking at right now essentially is a traditional pump station with force main configuration, meaning that the yellow box you're seeing at the northeast corner of Shellfont and Maras would be a traditional pump station envisioned to be with a wet well, a deep sump, if you will, below that station with the pumps that would sit on a base above and then pump the flows from that well as they rise and fall to the lake. However, when we get into the details here, there may be a benefit to have that wet well actually be linear, where we might actually have large diameter piping heading up Shellfont, maybe even for a portion of Maras. So we can minimize the size of our pumps and minimize the size of the force main that has to go to the lake. So the basis of design is absolutely necessary to turn this into, we got to get away from the study, that the study has identified what the most cost-effective set of projects is to reduce the minute, minimize the potential for flooding, reduce the flow off the pump station. The basis of design now will actually turn this three dimensionally. So we'll start looking at cross-sections now. What's feasible to construct? What kind of obstructions are we going to run into? What may be a better alternative, like in the form of, again, a long linear storage tunnel versus a very, very deep vertical sump? That's exactly what the next step would do is we would turn this over to my electrical structural and process department to, everybody would work together to identify what the best configuration is here to accomplish not only the immediate objective, but as Jennifer mentioned, what we'd like to do is make sure that once we invest into this, that we've set aside the footprint to be able to peel off and separate even more areas in the future, should that be necessary. I know there's been questions that have been raised about, you know, the global warming and a higher frequency of these short-duration, high-intent storms. So what we want to do is we don't want to build ourselves into a box. We want to invest so that the city has the capability to utilize what's been initially constructed to be able to expand on this if necessary for any other reason, either environmentally, ecologically, in the future. So really, this is again a 2D. The next step is to go 3D, start getting the cross-sections together. And again, working with the regulatory agencies as well. There are things that need to be overcome with regard to the discharge to the lake, how we're going to do that, working with Eagle, the Corps of Engineers and others.
So two questions, and then I'll turn over the councils. And I think everybody would want to know. One is why this scenario is compared to the others? And two, And two, if we were to approve, moving forward, let's say in April, what is your timeline from our approval and starting and ending construction approximately? Won't hold you to it.
Well, when we prepared the draft proposal for the basis of design, which is again, the next step that needs to have gone through to bring in all the stakeholders and get some more teeth to the uh constructability here, that basis of design is going to take approximately six months to complete. Once the basis of design is complete, if that's accepted by the city, then we would pursue with pursuing the formal permits that are necessary, which is the development of the plans and specifications for the project. That could take another six to nine months. So you're probably a year to a year and a half out from uh issuing any sort of project for bids to receive uh from contractors to, to, to build this. And then uh after that eighteen months, for a project of this magnitude, we're probably looking at anywhere from a two to three year construction timeframe. So you're still looking at from today, probably a solid three and a half to four years out before you would have a complete finished project.
And then why this proposal versus the others that were presented?
The, the, the best way to do that is um, I think in the executive summary that was provided to you, you will see that there is a table uh in that executive summary. Um, it's table one dash two. It's all on one page. And if you look at that table, uh mayor, that's the one I think that you're referring to. The far right column gives the estimated cost in millions for the, each of these alternatives. And you'll see that when you look at that one page, the most expensive option here that removes one hundred percent of the uh flow uh from the Kirby Road Pump Station are either the entire inland district separation or building that giant stormwater retention basin that Jennifer explained uh near Kirby as a wide spot in the line. And both of those are the uh options that they're sixty to a hundred and eighty-three million dollars to accomplish those objectives. Now, there's a column that um is very uh critical and that's the second from the right. It says uh eliminated reduction in surcharging and potential basement flooding. So if you look at, for example, even though alternative six that we're talking about here, it includes.
Jesse, let me interrupt. For those folks watching at home, uh can you put that up in case they don't have it?
Uh Jennifer, can you throw that up on the screen? Well, actually this expert excerpt that you're looking at right now is one slice of that. Uh, but there's one page. If she puts it all on there, I don't know if you'll be able to read it. But continuing on, I was gonna say, for example, in, if the slide you're looking at right now, you'll see that with uh alternative six, it actually includes alternative two C plus partial sewer separation south of Maras. Now, for alternative two C only, if we look at that right column, you'll see two C only removes approximately, it's a seventeen percent reduction in surcharging and potential basement flooding. Whereas for our alternative six, which includes two C plus the partial sewer separation uh south of Maras, we jump up to fifty-eight percent uh eliminated reduction in surcharging and potential basement flooding. There's not a, a, another alternative that is as cost effective to give us that much benefit at this cost. Uh, so it, 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 it rises up a, 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 above all of the other combinations of alternatives that we looked at with the overall benefit. Uh, same with the very first column, the peak flow reduction. Um, again, if we just do two C alone, the peak flow reduction is very minimal, uh less than a million gallons. However, the peak flow reduction um for alternative six is a hundred and twelve CFS, which is again, about thirty-two percent of the entire flow that goes to the Kirby Road Pump Station. There's three hundred and nine CFS total. So this alternative nips off a hundred and twelve CFS of that flow.
Perfect. All right. Thank you. Uh, Lev, I see you're itching to ask a question, so I'll let you go first.
Yeah, actually, I, I was looking at the same table and Jesse just a- answered the question. I um, um, I guess. No, I don't have any more because you just answered the question right there. That fifty-eight percent is a key number. Um, that you're, that you're, yeah, hovering over right there. That really should be what we, we should be, I think, concentrating on elimination of volume. That's the key, key thing is eliminating volume in this. And that seems to be the best alternative that I can tell anyway, based on what we're looking at here.
Okay. Uh, I can't see all my council members at the same time since the screen's taken over. So I see Mr. Bully raising his hand and then Mr. Richie.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, uh and Mr. Vander Creek and Ms. Mori Ali. I've litigated basement flooding cases and class action cases uh for just about thirty years now all over the state. And your presentation was excellent. You gave city council and our residents a very basic understanding of separated versus non-separated sewers, what happens with the waste from within our homes and, and it really was fantastic. In fact, I'm working on settling uh the August eleventh, two thousand fourteen, the last rain event case pending in Metro Detroit that dumped six inches of rain on some communities in one hour. And the, the price tag for these cases is phenomenal. And while legal liability for municipalities and rain event cases has decreased, everyone can, should note that the city of Gross Point Farms has really stepped up in terms of negotiating a settlement on behalf of its residents in, in which we anticipated years ago that remediation costs and our cost to try to attempt, not prevent this from happening in the future, but taking great steps would be do, reduced greatly and would cost upwards of twenty million dollars. But we also have to know all of our residents that we need to take affirmative steps to try to prevent this uh from happening in the future. This is going to be a two-year project. Make sure your lateral lines are cleaned. Make sure that the important things in your basement are not stored on the floor. There are backflow preventers that uh can be installed. There's also insurance policies available through s- uh certain companies um that can assist greatly because gone are the days where cities are gonna be able to write checks uh for twenty million dollar settlements, things of that nature. We're being very proactive and uh the decrease in, in flow for twenty to twenty-seven million dollars, what you proposed, uh will do a lot of our residents a great service. Thanks again. Oh, one question. I'm sorry. Uh, what about inconvenience and convenience to the neighbors immediately around the proposed pump station on Maras and Shell Fund? Uh, they certainly didn't buy parcels anticipating that people are gonna be drilling thirty feet deep, things of that nature. Can you discuss that briefly, please?
Sure, sure. Um, this is uh obviously a um, a landmark investment by the city. It, it, it's a landmark capstone type of a project to eliminate uh a longstanding uh issue of having this inland district in a bowl. Um, so with landmark construction does come uh landmark impacts. There, there will be environmental impacts that are gonna be short term. Uh, but the best that we're gonna do is be able to educate the public on the construction schedule, um, any sort of temporary traffic rerouting that it'll be necessary. Um, the actual site at the corner of um Shalfont and Maras will likely be able to be screened to some extent, at least on uh the, the areas that are around the, facing the golf course. Uh, uh, so there will be attempts to minimize disruption to the public. And particularly with the force main and with the separation, uh HRC is a, a strong believer. In fact, we're, we're a top fifty national firm in trenchless technologies. So our goal would be to try to do as much of this as we can utilizing uh horizontal directional drilling for, for the force main, ex- for example, where we're only gonna have to have an access pit at one location and maybe not another pit for several hundred and maybe even several thousand feet. Um, uh, so the, 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 the details of the design will be focused around minimizing the overall impact to the residents. However, i- it's a construction project and it's a significant construction project. So there will have to be uh much public education, uh continuous communications with all of the residents that not only live around that area, but to the entire community. Because quite frankly, Maras and Shell font is a gateway to our community in Gross Point Farms. So we need to be vigilant when we're putting together our specifications at what's expected out of the contractor to maintain a clean and operational uh site that minimizes the public to the greatest extent possible. Uh, but again, it's a, it is a massive construction project. There, there will be uh, you know, noise. There, there will be dirt. Uh, but we also again have specifications that require that to be swept up and watered down. And it'll be a continuous operation. Um, I, I hate to use this term, but it is, you know, one of these it's short-term pain, long-term gain for, for this community that's been a long time in the coming.
Mr. Vander Creek and Ms. Mori Ali, thanks again. Mr. Mayor, thank you, sir.
You're on mute.
My bad, my bad. Joe, you had your hand up at the same time as John. Sorry, go ahead. Then Beth and then Neil. Now we can't hear you, Joe.
Can you hear me now?
Now you can hear you. Go ahead.
I gotta talk right into the microphone. Um, the hunt club situation is uh a lot more uh uh I am a water that I anticipated, and I think that needs to get addressed uh sooner than later. Certainly charge people, but if we could get them off our sewer system, that's really what the long-term goal has got to be. Eventually that place will be redeveloped and we'll have houses in there on, on gross point. Connected to our system. The other thing I wanted to mention too is that Chalfont uh does have a big creek underneath it that you can drive. And I don't know how you're going to go long longitudinal up Chalfont for in la- uh enlarging your, your vault down there. So I just, you know, we need to think about that. And then finally, the uh certainly it is the gateway to our community. Uh, I see that being a, a, a park-like setting. Uh, we certainly back the generators or uh we don't have the same situation at Kirby. But I think this is a, the, the move on fifty-eight percent of our volume and get rid of the hunt club off our system. I think that would be a, a real big step in the right direction. Just my comments. Thank you, Mr.
Mr. Mayor, just a clarification. I think the proposal would be a thirty-two percent reduction in peak flow. Just the, the fifty-eight was uh for potential basement flooding, that percentage. So when we're talking a major rain event, we're talking about recent, reducing the amount of flow under the scenario to the Kirby Road Pump Station by about a third.
Okay. Uh, Beth?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I really appreciate the presentation from all of you and the hard work that's been put into it. Um, I have a question just from a constituency viewpoint. When you talk to many of the residents that are on Fisher, McKinley, McMillan and Moran, as you know, Neil and I and some others that did dinner or door-to-door canvassing, this is a major issue. This was one of the number one issues addressed to me at least. So I, my question is this. Um, for the alternative plan, uh which is on page at number thirteen, and we have the fifty-eight percent reduction, is that our answer to these homeowners, some of them who were hit twice, which includes my father, who did not sue, by the way, uh but it um, I think that's the question that uh many of our residents wanna know who have been suffering in the past with this. Does this plan give them some real assurances um that if they are good homeowners and they do their, 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 their due diligence on their own property, but does that give them a good? Good. Um, do they feel, will this plan satisfy some of the different uh criticisms, needs and issues, previous issues? Will it address all of those? Do you think that this is the plan that's gonna help those people on those streets that I just mentioned?
Yes, I, I do. In the, the south east quadrant in particular, um, as Jennifer showed in one of her slides, the issue there really isn't the, the Kirby Road Pump Station or, or even the receiving sewer in Shalfont or Beaufort. Um, what that is in that area is we actually have an existing combined sewer that really has the capability of carrying less than a five-year storm event right now. Um, and what happens, even though we have free pipe capacity and the discharge at Shalfont heading up towards Kirby, those local streets, McKinley, McMillan, uh in that area, when we want to design a storm sewer, the practice is design a storm sewer for a ten-year rate of return, a ten-year event. So when we design a new storm sewer on those roads, localized separation only, what we're doing now is we're taking that storm water out of the pipe that can back up into the house. Now that storm sewer is dumping the, the rainwater freefall into a free outlet pipe where we have capacity, taking the pressure off of that existing, one existing combined line that's in that street that every house is sanitary, street stormwater, footing drain flow is all rushing into in these high intensity, short duration events. So what you're gonna have there is a design that actually meets the current modern day storm sewer, which is protection for a ten-year, one-hour event. Will there never be flooding again? I can't say that because if we get an event that is uh, uh beyond the design capability of the system, then we're going to receive, we're gonna see adverse impacts. Um, but for the most part, for a, a traditional ten-year, one-hour event, which is what we see in this area, those areas will have a significant improvement in their capability and protect them against flooding and surcharging on those streets in those quadrants.
Great. Thank you, Jesse. I appreciate your answer.
Uh, Neil?
Yeah, um, thanks for this presentation. I know there was a lot of uh like, like uh council member Connor was talking about. There were a bunch of people that asked about it a couple of year ago and I was knocking doors. Um, I am, uh, we were talking a little bit, Mr. Van de Creek, about the um kind of immediate impact. I get the short-term pain for the long-term gain. I am a little concerned about the long-term impacts on people nearby. Um, what kind of sound does this pumping station make at the corner of Shalfont and Maras for, for neighbors that they have to be aware of and, and plan for? And um, y- you know, uh, Councilmember Rishi was talking a little bit about the park-like setting. I remember seeing some um images of that. Is this something that is primarily taking place underground? Um, what exists above grade? Um, because as, as many people have talked about, that intersection is probably one of the most prominent intersections uh in the city. Um, so what that looks like aesthetically, I think, is really important. And then the third question I had was, um, obviously uh we're talking about a pretty significant investment in infrastructure, um, but it does sound like there is an opportunity in doing this for savings in terms of um when we have these storm events and we have to pay additional money, I believe, to the Great Lakes Water Authority. What kind of reduction in costs uh long-term will residents see because of the investments that we're making i- if we decided to pursue this project?
Okay, I'm gonna answer those in, in reverse order. As far as the uh anticipated uh reduction in costs, uh Jennifer went through a scenario of looking at that hundred and twelve CFS or the, the volume of flow. And correct me if I'm wrong, Jennifer, but our number from GLWA with the current rates was approximately, it was approaching two hundred thousand dollars a year. So we're looking at about a two hundred thousand dollar a year in savings for sewage disposal fees to GLWA. That is your third question. Um, the second question. The second question regarding the gateway to the community and the aesthetics. That's exactly, again, what this basis of design report is going to flush out. Not only, again, you know, where is everything? Where's all the spaghetti under the ground? We got to start turning this thing three dimensionally and giving you guys some cross sections and show you how deep this wet well needs to be below the ground. And that was when I was discussing potential alternatives for shifting that storage horizontally versus vertically and getting into the 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 route evaluations for the discharge, et cetera. All that's going to be underground. But as far as what's going to be on top, I envision this to, obviously, we're all familiar with Kirby Road Pump Station. I I I I don't think that we're going to have the budget to build a a building that looks like that building. But the intent would be to basically have this look like when we're done, the 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 building that's on top of of the whatever's below it and what's inside of it should be equitable to the architecture of the surroundings. And I'll give you a good example. We designed a CSO basin. Again, same same idea here, except we're we're collecting all this sewage and storing it and bleeding it off and preventing it to go to the Rouge River up in Birmingham. And we built that building to look like a grist mill. It literally has a stone fascia. You would never know that it's a sanitary pumping station. In this case, we would work with the city on developing the aesthetics that you'd like to see. But essentially, when people are driving into the city, they should believe that that's just another home. So that that's the goal here. Okay? And then the basis of design report, what we can do is we can give you a a couple of ideas based on input from the city of of what this could look like. So that was your second question. The first question, well, and a little bit about your first question too, as far as long term environmental impacts. So really, when we're all done, there should be no perception that that's anything other than just another house. Sure, we're going to have to have means for a vehicle to pull up and be able to pull pumps in the future or things like that for maintenance. But generally speaking, it should look just like the residential structure. Your first, your first question as far as sound, the city obviously has maximum decibel levels that are allowed. And we would ensure that with the sizing of these pumps and the insulation of the home structure around it, that's going to look like a home, would would make sure that we would not have any unnecessary impact to the residents from what's happening inside of the structure. And that being said, I I full well envision that there'll be a generator that'll be required at this facility as well. And I think that you've all seen the 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 giant two thousand kilowatt generator that's over at Kirby Road. And you see how that screen wall off, the generator that's going to be necessary here is going to be much smaller, but it will also be screen walled, sound include, sound enclosed to make sure that when it is operational, if we do lose power, for example, and we still need to pump that storm water through a a really bad event, that it's not waking up or shaking anybody's windows next door. We we're very, very cognizant of the 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 decibel ratings and making sure that even when we have to load test this thing, we're going to have to, you know, full load bank test it annually. And when we're running that, we don't want to wake neighbors up. We don't want to have neighbors calling the city. So that's a pretty traditional design standard with HRC, with our electrical department, our architectural departments to make sure that the maximum decibel ratings are not even come close to.
Is there, and then finally, thank you, you went through all the three questions. Well, the the kind of follow up I had was, is there, is this something that's running all the time? Or it sounds like there's definitely at moments where you have peak, it'll maybe be a lot different. Is it, is it, or is it only running at peak?
And that's, that's, that's a great point. Remember, we're not talking about a sanitary pump station here. We're talking about a storm water pumping station. Now, even though it's a storm water pumping station, for the most part, it's going to operate when it's raining. Right? When it rains, we're going to have new collection system that's going to take flow to this area. We're going to design the wet well or the storage component so that the pumps don't turn on and off more than four times per hour. That's just a, you know, we don't want to wear these things out. So generally speaking, it's going to operate during a storm event. However, we all know that there's no such thing as a completely tight system, even with a brand new storm sewer system. So there's going to be some sort of trickle effect. There'll be, you know, groundwater, there'll be, so slowly, maybe if, let's say it doesn't rain for two or three weeks, you still might have one pump that comes on because the level in the wet well may come up a little bit and it pumps it down. But then if there's no rain, nothing's going to happen until that thing slowly, slowly comes back up again. But essentially, that's how it'll be designed. I I envision this to be two, three, four pumps. And again, your your first pump turns on when you get up to ten feet, the second pump on at fifteen feet, the third pump on, are you with me?
Yeah.
So we pump that thing down. Storm, storm ends, we basically stop pumping.
And is this, and and maybe this may not be a question for you, Mr. Van de Creek. Thank you so much. It might be a question for city management, but is there any staffing or kind of long term personnel implications of of adding this additional capacity? Or is it handled elsewhere and by the same people we have now?
Yeah, I think on this call, we've got Scott Hamigot of our superintendent, and I think Dan Schavan is our distribution foreman will be is on this call as well. Yeah, there'll be some, I think, additional responsibility, maintenance responsibilities for the new pump station, the pumps, the generator, and you know, those mechanisms. But we don't think it will be anything that'll be overwhelming, something that would be incorporated with our regular maintenance routine. And, you know, it's kind of, you're you're taking off some of the demand off of the current Kirby Road Pump Station and then putting it on this new pump station. So some of those ongoing costs, the things like electrical, you're just you'll be saving on one side and you'll be paying on the other end for those those costs. The, you know, the the real savings obviously comes from the 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 water you're diverting from the combined system and going for treatment. And that 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 would be savings.
Well, great. Thank you so much. And thanks for answering all my questions. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Neil. Jimmy, do you have any questions? You're on mute, Jim.
I don't know. I'm not that fast with my fingers, Lou. No, not at the current time. I've got a lot of questions, but I want to do a little more research and I'll probably ask administratively to Mr. Eastside to get some answers from HRC. But it's been interesting tonight to listen to and I appreciate it. We got to work on something, so. I'll leave it at that.
I I will, Deb, I'm going to ask you a quick question. So obviously, we've already approved two mills for our roads. Think people see a twenty seven million dollar price tag on this. Can you go through at least our ideas on how we would fund this project? I know we've got the lakeside sewer separation. Last payment on that bond coming up. Jesse said we'll save a couple hundred thousand dollars a year, hopefully on GLWA fees for lack, less water going into the sewage treatment. And with the mill coming off, why don't you talk about that a little bit?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen. There are many ways to address this and the most important thing when we're looking at a debt issue is structuring the debt so that it fits in with the other obligations that we currently have. So this first page here has a lot of information on it. But what I'm going to just point out is the column. So obviously, when we're looking at funding a project like this, we're we're making certain assumptions. The first thing to note is we're looking here with the assumption that we would issue twenty five million dollars of bonds over a twenty year period. And now really is a great time to be issuing debt if we were to do it. We would foresee being able to in the current market, get well under two and a quarter percent interest. But we use two and a quarter just as a basis point here. In addition, the first column is our taxable value. We assumed that overall, the city's total taxable value would increase by two and a half percent each year. Again, that's different from the CPI index, which limits capped properties. But because of construction and property sales, we've been in excess of the two and a half percent in recent years. The next column shows what we currently have outstanding in bond issues. So we have just over five point six million dollars. You'll see right here the two of our bond issues will be dropping off after this fiscal year, which leaves some cushion and drops those obligations down. The next column is related to this new possible bond issue using the assumptions that I just went through. So over the course of twenty years, if we were able to get a bond issued for two and a quarter percent, we would anticipate a total cost, principal and interest of just under thirty two point eight million dollars. That gives us the next column, which is our total debt service requirements, which is our existing debt plus this new bond issue. We took into account the two hundred thousand dollars a year reduction in costs from Great Lakes Water Authority, which gave us the net amount that we would anticipate being paid through millage obligations. The next part that I looked at here was in order to fund this debt service requirement, what would our millage for the debt only need to be? So that's this second to the last column. And the very interesting thing is this last column is how much more or less would that be from our current millage rate of the one point zero eight three four? So you can see we are well under one mil in all of these scenarios. So I always think a picture really does paint the story for you. So this is our current year in the far left column, which includes our two mills for the roads. So our current millage rate in total is sixteen point nine five mills. So we continue to have over this course of time. We have the five year road millage. We have our current debt service millage. So this particular item structures the debt so that as other bond issues drop off, we would increase our principal payments on this new millage. And so after this initial five years with the roads, which is the two mills that would drop off, and we would actually drop down and we would be back under the well under sixteen mills. What this gives us, and I also have this stretched out over the twenty year period because I think that's another important thing to look at. So what this really does is it allows us, and it and it can visually show how we would continue to have cushion in here if we were to need to bond for other infrastructure projects. If there were other items that that came up, we we are still while it would be slightly above the fourteen point nine five mills that we were prior to the road millage being approved, it would actually drop below where we currently are right now. So what the typical taxpayer would see in this scenario would be the the gradual increase related to changes in taxable value. And actually, at year five, it would actually drop back down. So right here, I've shown this slide to you before, but I just wanted to put it up one more time. Where the dotted lines are along here shows where debt drops off. So the most significant one is here, as I mentioned before. These are the the two existing bonds related to the previous sewer separation. And these are the bonds that are paid for through our debt millage. It's important to note that we also have other debt that's paid for just through our general operating millages and is just part of our regular budget. Some of these drop off, which again, still leaves us in a position where we would potentially be able to do other projects that we've been looking at. Again, without significantly changing the the tax structure to our community. So it is really scary when you start talking about twenty five million dollars. But it is important to know that there are ways of structuring it that can make it manageable and affordable. And this is exactly the kind of thing that we work hard to have that triple A rating for so that we can get the optimal interest rates and really maximize our ability to get these big projects done.
All right. Thanks, Deb, so much. Anybody have any questions for Deb before we open for any questions from the public? Joe?
I talked to Shane about coming up with something like this, and I knew Deborah would good visual terms for everybody to understand. So I really, really take my hand off to you. You did a great job. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Beth.
Deb, as always, kudos to you. But my question is, when exactly does our bond debt drop off in two thousand and twenty one?
The last principal payment for that, I believe, is in April.
Okay. Thank you.
All right, anybody else? Or, oh, Joe's got another question. Go ahead. Or two more questions. He had two fingers up. I don't know.
When you go back to that first column about the two and a half percent increase over the assessed values, Shane and I've had discussions, and maybe you do too. We're we're flipping about two hundred and fifty houses a year. So you can see in a in a ten year period, you're going to have half your houses wolfed. So I think two and a half is what we've been averaging, but right now, the housing market is pretty hot here. So we could even see some increase in that assessed value as we go forward.
Yeah, that's true. Our overall increase in taxable value has been closer to three and a half or four percent the last couple of years. So we we believe that the two and a half percent is a reasonable amount to be using.
Don't worry, Joe. I'm responsible for about half of that two and a half percent increase this year. All right. Any other questions from the council? All right, Derek, I'll turn it over. You see if there are any questions from the public.
Okay, if there's any questions from the public, please use the participants tab to raise your hand and I will call on you. The first question is from Andy Durbin. The first question is from Andy Durbin, and I'm going to unmute him now.
Andy, you're on.
Thank you, Andy Durbin, 306 Fisher. Thank you, Jennifer and Jesse. That helped a lot of my questions that I posed in the letter to the council tonight. I'm still, I'm still a little curious about this proposal six, because I'm not sure I understand what you're doing down in the southeast. It looks like you're not really separating, you're kind of pulling some of the water out of the, except, I'm out of the combined, but it's going back in again. So you're, what, so what actually you're doing? I don't quite follow it. Could you explain a little bit better?
What, what we're actually doing down there is we're, we're taking the potential that exists today for flooding and eliminating that from the current configuration. As you are aware, on those streets in the southeast, you've got one single combined sewer pipe there down those streets that convey both the sanitary flow, the stormwater from the streets, the stormwater that comes from the footing drains from the homes, et cetera. What we've seen is in very marginal rainfall events, again, a five-year type rate of return, that single pipe in the southeast quad will surcharge. And we will see basements that do get water in, 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 homes that do get water in the basement. And that's, that's very, very unfortunate. Because when, what Jennifer had tried to show, when we modeled the system, we actually put together a very detailed dynamically simulated hydraulic model that shows the reaction of that single pipe as it starts to fill. And what we saw was, you're absolutely right in the fact that we're not necessarily taking that stormwater out of the combined at that area. What we're doing is we're taking the stormwater out of that local pipe in the street that can't handle it, doesn't have the capacity. So when it rains too hard, that sewer surcharges, that single sewer surcharges, and the water tends to eke back up towards the basements. And then eventually, you got water in the basement. If we build just a separate storm sewer in each of those streets down there in the southeast, we're going to effectively remove all of the rainwater that's falling and running off from the homes, the yards, the streets, and putting it into a separate pipe, thereby taking off the pressure on the existing single combined sewer line that is on all those streets now. So what you'll have during a rain event, the stormwater will be conveyed in its own pipe, thereby not exacerbating the sanitary sewage and commingling that flow, and then eliminating the possibility of that sewer from surcharging and backing up into basements. So in those areas, we're literally just building a new storm sewer to take the pressure of that stormwater off of the existing sanitary line that's being exacerbated.
It's only two streets. I think McMillan and, McMillan, Font Vernon and part of McKinney, is that correct?
That's correct.
But all those streets, all those streets, I mean, from Mac to Bopray, all those streets got hammered in this, that, that September 2011 flooding. I mean, people had three feet of water in the basements. It was horrible. So, so.
Well, and, and you're right. And, and under that event, you had, what, Jennifer, 130-year rate of return event? So in that situation, likely the receiving sewer, the line in Chalfont, was probably full too. So again, we're not designing this system to be able to handle a 130-year event. We would never design something that big. It wouldn't operate properly under normal conditions.
Okay, that's, I mean, I just.
Just even in that event, though, because of all the other, you'd still help capacity, because now you've separated a section of the city that would normally be going into Kirby Road to someplace else. So it should free up water flow from the other areas. I started at the very beginning, isn't that correct?
Yes.
Yes. Yeah. And just another, just a quick point too, in Jessica's presentation, Andy, she didn't note that 2011, you know, there was other factors beyond.
Oh, yeah.
It was, there was, there were power issues at the Kirby Road pump station where we've invested four and a half million dollars to rectify.
Yeah, we talked about that offline, the day, yeah, Shane.
So people have to understand when you, whatever we add on here, we've already put four and a half million dollars.
Oh, yeah.
On a power solution that will assist us both at Kirby and this new building. So it's important to know that's more like 30 some million dollars.
Oh, yeah. But I, I was concerned along, along Chalfont, we have the school and those, those, the schools and the churches, huge buildings, huge parking lots. They're dumping a lot of water into that combined system. Would helping, would help if you had, just for those places, if you had just a, a system to collect the surface water, wouldn't that be a big help for the sys, system, for the whole system also? Jesse?
Well, certainly, anytime we can attenuate flow.
Right, right, right.
So to say, it's going to be beneficial to minimizing sewer surcharging. So absolutely, anytime we can work in partnerships with our private property owners to seek best management practices that would minimize the runoff from a site, that should absolutely be pursued. Right now, you can see what the city has done systematically over the years is install those restricted covers in, in, in the area down there in the southeast and southwest. Specifically, just to try to store that water on the road and not let it all gush back into the basements when the pipe is surcharged.
I know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So absolutely, I agree 100%. If we can be proactive from an educational perspective on our private property owners, at means and methods to attenuate or minimize the high impact of fast runoff, that, that is a, an ideal, ideal tool to minimize the, 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 the volume that we have to deal with in a short period of time. We might still have to deal with the whole volume, but if we can spread that out.
Right. Can you explain more about this, this peak? There's 120 something, how, how you, how you calculating that for these, for these particular? What Jennifer's talking about, those, those three key, these things you're, things you're combining. I guess I don't quite understand that. That first column, the far left, you're talking about in that, that one sheet, we, we couldn't all see, we don't all have access.
Okay, the, the first column, you mean the peak flow reduction?
Yeah.
Is that what you're referring to?
Yeah, yes.
Okay, right. Okay, well, again, if anybody has a copy of that, in, in Jennifer's presentation, she was bringing up just little slivers of the, the table that's on one page there.
Yeah.
And that first column with reduction at Kirby Road Pump Station and Peak Flow, that is the cubic feet per second that will no longer go to Kirby, because it'll be going to the new pump station at Maras and Chalfont. So for example, the very first alternative, when we talked about getting rid of the I and I that's in the old 100-year lakeside district combined sewer, since we built all new storm sewers, we can see by that table that even if we tighten that whole system up, the fact of the matter is it only reduces flow to the Kirby Road Pump Station by three cubic feet per second. Whereas if you go down to the bottom in alternative six, if we implement alternative two C, removing from the northwest, the partial sewer separation, south of Maras and the southeast, we actually remove 112 CFS of flow off of the Kirby that's now being directed to our new stormwater pumping station.
Well, two, two D is 99.
Two C.
Yeah, two, two, two C 98, two, two D's 99. So that's the big, get a big bang right there, just like, just that north, that north quadrant.
There's no doubt about it. And a lot of that, of course, is that, that entirely, it's like low hanging fruit.
Absolutely.
Northwest quadrant is right there. That whole neighborhood is really easy to separate. It takes a whole lot of stormwater off. In addition to obviously running a parallel storm sewer down Chalfont and maybe even Maras to pick up all of our footing or all of our tile flow coming from CCD directly into those lines. So when you add those two areas up, it's a significant amount of acreage that we're peeling off of the Kirby Road system. Absolutely right.
So, so another 13 or 14 comes out of the southeast con, but that changed then.
Correct.
10% more, something, top percent more or something like that. Okay.
So that's, that's, that table's a really nice table to go back to and kind of wrap your head around each one of these and look at those as far as what you're getting bang for your buck. That line six, you get the best bang for your buck across the board.
Can we get that table somebody, so we have that? Because we don't have that in this package, one, 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 I like tape, that's, that's a great table that Jennifer put together. We don't have that. We didn't get that for the people. Right, just didn't see all of, we don't see all this information. That's why I'm asking all these picky questions.
We can put that on the web. We can put that on the web.
Buy that. We can provide that.
I appreciate it. Thanks so much, guys. Appreciate all your help.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Presentation add on the seawall. I like that. It's very helpful.
Great. Anybody else in the public have any questions? All right, I don't see any. So Andy, are you raising your hand again?
No, no.
Okay. Shane, what are our next steps then from here?
Okay, I just have one comment. I just saw an email from a, a former commander at Commodore, the yacht club, Mr. Vogel, who I think is still online. He said that the Country Club of Detroit put in a new seawall. I think they went two feet higher above than the high, the high watermark.
You mean the yacht club?
And they, and they anticipated with their seawall 50-year lifespan. So I just, just from the yacht club has had some experience that he wanted to share.
Not the CCD, right?
I'm sorry, yeah, correct. Yes. No seawalls at the, yeah.
I was about to say, it'd make it a little tough for the swim team to get in and out of the pool if they had an extra two feet of seawall.
All right. Well, I guess next steps in terms of, you know, this is really was a lot to absorb. And, you know, our hope is, it would be the next step is that there's some, there's a consensus to move forward, would bring HRC back with the proposal to do, begin the the design work, design engineering. We have a proposal that we received from HRC. It's, you know, approximately $160,000 to, as kind of Jesse put it, like how he put it, to go from two-dimensional to three-dimensional and actually see how the system would, would look and function underground. And, and some alternatives in terms of how it would be routed out to Lake St. Clair. And so we have something more, again, more quantitative to look at, something to tighten numbers at cost estimates with. And, and began that process, which will be, as Jesse said, approximately a six-month process.
So, well, that, that, that could be something we could vote on in February, and then they'd cut their proposals ready in, and then they would commence work on that. We'd hear back somewhere around August or September.
Correct.
Okay, all right. Well, absent objection, I think we'd like to see that on the February agenda.
Very good.
All right, if nobody has, has anybody have anything else to discuss tonight? Mr. Eastside, are we all good to go?
I have no other items. No, thank you all.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for participating. Thank you, Bill and Andy, everybody for your questions, and everybody have a good week. Be safe.
A good meeting. Thank you.